Good evening and welcome to the eight hundred and seventy-fifth meeting of the City of Laurel Regular Meeting of the Historic District Commission. The qualifications of the members of the commission, the staff to the commission, and any consultants used are on file with the city and are hereby made a part of each and every application heard today. The guidelines and procedures adopted by the commission are also made a part of each and every application. Each application heard today is considered on its own merits and is not to be considered as establishing a precedent for any other application. When we have our virtual meetings, the Laurel Cable TV people would like you to mute your microphone when you're not speaking and when you do speak to state your name. So item number one on the agenda is the roll call. Sydney, would you call the roll please? Are you muted Sydney? Sydney, are you there? We can't hear you.
Sorry about that Madam Chair, Sydney will be doing it from our office.
Councilmember Cole. Mr. De La Puente. Ms. Snyder.
Present.
Ms. Frazier.
Present.
Ms. Les.
Here.
Ms. Steiniki.
Present.
Ms. McSiney.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Item number two is approval of the minutes for the regular HDC meeting held on October fifteenth. I have a number of corrections, so I would like to table this until our next meeting. And I don't know the procedure for doing that.
Madam Chair, this is Director Burrow, so I can be clear. You want to table the first item again?
Yes, please. The approval of the minutes.
Okay, approval of the minutes, okay.
So I think I need a motion from someone. If someone would please do that for me.
I'm trying to find the date of the last minutes and I could do that, but I can't scroll. I can't scroll up.
October fifteenth.
Okay, then I move that we table the minutes of the October fifteenth meeting to the next, our next meeting.
Thank you. Have a motion for Ms. Snyder. Could I hear a second?
I'll second. Nancy, I think I'll second the motion, please.
Thank you. Sydney, we have a motion from Ms. Snyder and a second from Ms. Steiniki. Would you call the roll please? How about I just call the roll? Is that, does anyone object to that?
No.
Okay.
I'm just gonna do it from Montez's office.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Ms. Steiniki.
Here.
Ms. Frazier.
Yes, excuse me. Excuse me, this is Ms. McSiney. We're voting, so it's not, you're not standing, we're not having a roll call for who is here, but it is voting on.
Yes, you're right, you're right, sorry.
Could you start again, please Sydney?
I'm confused with the in and out thing.
Okay, Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Ms. Steiniki.
Yes.
Ms. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Les.
Yes.
Ms. McSiney.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item number two, HDC twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three zero for six hundred Montgomery Street, submitted by Lam Vu. We saw this application last month and wanted more information and I see the applicant is here. And I'm guessing he also spoke with staff, so if staff would like to present their report, that would be great, please.
Yes, this is Taylor Harvey, the Planner One with ECD. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. This is Taylor Harvey with ECD again. This applicant is seeking HDC approval to install a porch. The applicant is seeking HDC approval to install a porch at the front of their property. This application was tabled at the previous meeting, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The applicant is proposing to install a porch that will be eight feet wide by twenty feet long. The porch will be elevated four feet above the grounds elevation, which will be leveled with existing porch's height. The roof will also be leveled with the existing main structure height. The proposed porch roof will contain the same color inching goes as the existing roof of the main structure, which will be the Royal Royal Sovereign Golden Cedar algae resistant three tab roofing shingle. The existing electric meters will be relocated six feet up, excuse me, twelve feet to the left of the present position. However, BG&E contractor will be coming out to the applicant's house in a couple of days to examine and he will give the applicant advice for the best relocation of the electric meters. Proposed porch and deck will be ultra white in color, made of pressure treated wood and material. Staff recommends HDC approval for certificate number HDC R twenty twenty-five zero zero three zero to include the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain a City of Laurel building permit. Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant is online for any questions.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd just like to ask if there is a drawing of what the porch is going to look like?
The applicant has submitted hand drawings that will illustrate their proposed deck and porch.
But there's not a picture of the house with the porch on it?
With the actual image, this is the most that we have and then there is a front elevation as well.
Ms. Snyder, I think you're, you're looking for a drawing of the entire front of the house, is that correct?
Correct.
Sorry, the one that, yes, there, no, the drawing above the picture, that's the best that we've got.
Yes. Well, can we, if we scroll down to the actual picture of the house, is the where the steps are now and that decking porch there, is the porch going to go right up against where, where the present porch is?
Yes, it'll just extend where the existing porch ends. It'll just be extended to the end of the house and everything will be leveled. The existing end of the porch will be demolished and it will then move to the end of the house.
There you go.
And the, all of the out of I don't even know what I'm gonna say here, for all of the, the gas and electric and all of that there, that's all gonna be moved?
Correct.
And what about the window that's there on the bottom now? Those two windows.
The applicant will have to answer that question.
So, Mr. Vu, are those just going to be covered up? I mean, they'll just be under the porch?
Yeah, about the window, it's still there. So the window is like we fit from the, 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 the net level.
Right, they'll just be under the porch, we won't see them anymore.
What windows? Excuse me? You mean the, the three windows in the front?
Yeah, it's still there.
Grounds, there are two little windows, do you see the little X's?
Oh, I see them now, yes. Uh huh.
So I don't think that's terribly uncommon.
No.
House I'm in has a couple of those. At least three that I can think of, maybe four. Are there any other questions?
So is the porch going to come below the three windows that are there? Is it gonna be below that?
So, the porch that's there is just gonna be widened to the left side of the house. So the windows will look onto the new porch.
Well, if you scroll up a little, where that railing is that's there, I guess that's all gonna come down.
That's the new
Going up.
Right here, this is the new porch.
Right, okay.
So I have a question about the new roof. In one of the drawings, the new porch roof was, was angled. How is that going to tie into the existing porch roof?
I believe the existing and proposed roof is going to match the same thing. So as the existing roof has a angle to it, the proposed roof will have an angle as well.
So it, the, the, the drawing we, we have seen has an angle to it, but if you look at the existing roof over the front door, that comes in, so it's gonna be, that's going to be angled in?
The applicant can clarify if I'm wrong or not. Just want to make sure that I'm not saying anything incorrect.
So sir, can you explain how the new roof is going to fit in? Is it going to be flat or angled?
It's angled. The, the existing, existing roof is like thirty degrees, so it's very deep. And the, the, the new roof is like two inch rise up every one foot. So that's the the limit of the rising. So it goes up two inch every one foot. So for this, for this roof, for the new roof, it's go up sixteen inch higher than the, 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 the outside of the porch.
Okay. I still don't, I can't envision how that's going to work, but
So I, I have the, the, the drawing on the side, you can turn on it and see it. The drawing of the side of the house. It says side, side view from Sixth Street Road.
Yes. So, okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, could I hear a motion?
I would like to add lattice under the porch decking, as we discussed last time, to the mo, to the approval.
Sir, what were you planning to put along the bottom, under, you know, around the porch bottom? From the, from the floor of the porch to the ground? Mr. Vu?
Yes.
What? What is the material, if any, you have proposed from the floor of the porch down to the ground? Were you planning on having it open or would you cover it with lattice or something?
Yeah, we, we I have a drawing here, it said cover with the ladder, right?
Okay. All right. Great. Anything else?
So did he say there would be lattice under the porch deck?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve. This is Marlene Frazier. I move that we approve HDC twenty twenty-five zero zero three zero for six hundred Montgomery Street as submitted with the addition of lattice to be put between the porch deck and the ground.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
So this is Nancy Steiniki. I will second the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sydney, we have a motion to approve in a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Steiniki.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Ms. Les.
Yes.
Ms. McSiney.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four, HDC twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three four for three thirty-six Laurel Avenue. Submitted by Claire Tills. The applicant is seeking approval to replace the roof in architectural shingle style and color charcoal gray and replace the current gutters with K-style gutters. Would staff like to present their report?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. This is Taylor Harvey, Planner One with ECD. The applicant is seeking HDC approval to replace their roof. The applicant is seeking HDC approval to replace the roof of the main structure of the house. The applicant proposes to replace the existing three tab shingles with architectural shingles. The proposed shingles will be similar to the existing color timberland natural shadow charcoal algae resistant architectural styles shingles. The proposed work will also include replacing damaged gutters, which will be six inches of aluminum without gars. The gutters will be white in color and K-style. Staff recommends HDC commission, HDC approved, certificate number HDC R twenty twenty-five zero zero three four. Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant is online for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
This is Nancy, I might have a question here. I see in one of the photographs that we have a downspout as well as the gutters. So my question is, do you need to replace the downspouts as well or is this just a gutter replacement?
It will include the downspouts as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll ask, so the, the gutters that are there are half round and the downspouts are round, so since you're changing to the K-style, will the downspouts now be rectangular? I believe so, yes. Okay. Anyone else? Could I hear a motion?
Mary Ann, I move to approve HDC twenty twenty-five zero zero three four for three thirty-six Laurel Avenue.
Second.
Thank you. Sydney, we have a motion to approve from Ms. Les and a second from Ms. Snyder. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Les.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Ms. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Steiniki.
Yes.
Ms. McSiney.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to the meeting. We appreciate that. And I apologize to Mr. Vu too, I'm sorry, I forgot to thank him. Item number five, HDC twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three five for thirty-four Avondale Street. Submitted by Donald Edwards. The applicant is seeking to install a gazebo and a vinyl fence and remove a tree. Would staff like to present a report?
Yes, good evening, commission members. My name is Justin Thornton. The applicant is seeking approval for a six-foot white vinyl flat top fence with a gate. The fence will be from the side going to the back of the property. The applicant is also seeking approval to install a concrete slab that will be eleven feet by fourteen feet. The slab will have a gazebo that will be ten feet to twelve feet and there will be more than enough green space that the City of Laurel requires. And then on top of all that, there is a large sycamore tree on the side of the front yard that the applicant would like to remove as well. And I believe the applicant, applicant is here to field any questions.
Great, thank you. So I have a question and I was not able to, to go down there. So is all of this installed or not?
No, it has, no work has been done yet.
Okay, so that's, okay. I wasn't really sure on that. Okay, and is the gazebo black or white? Because I thought I saw it somewhere it was white, but then I also saw black.
I believe it is black if, uh, Mr. Edwards, if you're here, could you just verify that for me? I believe you're still on mute. I believe he's trying to get off mute.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me? Yes, the, the gazebo, the, the gazebo is gonna be a vinyl, is gonna be I want, she want the white one, but the, the one that if we pick out, they don't have the white in stock, it'll be a brown, a brown one close to the same color of her house.
Isn't the house cream?
Yes, it's gonna be either white one or cream one close to the color of her house, because she's getting, she's her father is, uh, is, um, working on probably next year to get her, uh, that, um, Lumen siding that's on her house to redone, because they redid the roof and all that stuff a while back.
Okay, so we don't know what color the gazebo will be?
It could be, it could be, I think it's going, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure if we can't find the cream of the house, of the, of the house, it's gonna be a, a white one.
Okay. And then my other question is about the tree. I don't have a problem removing a damaged tree or a tree that is causing problems in your yard or something, but to replace an enormous tree like a sycamore with a much, 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 much smaller tree like a dogwood does bother me. You know, would she consider, or, you know, something larger? You know, a maple or a ginkgo or an oak?
That's, that's, that's not a problem. I, 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 I told my niece oak or whatever and she told me she want a dogwood because she like it because it's in my yard and my house. But, uh, oak is not a problem.
And you know, you could plant two. Because you could plant, you know, an oak and a dogwood and, you know, the oak will you know, the, the dogwood is an understory tree, so they would not interfere with each other.
Right, right, right. Yes, yes ma'am.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Hi, this is Nancy Steiniki and I'm looking at the first photograph of the yellow house with the tree next to it. It is a shame, yeah, if you slide up. It's a shame that we're going to lose such a champion tree of Laurel, but I do know from my own experience dealing with poison ivy is very dangerous. So I hate to see it go, but if you eradicate that poison ivy So um, I hate to see it go, but uh if you eradicate that poison ivy, you are doing the whole town a service. So I do appreciate.
Well, ma'am, uh, my, uh, before I take the tree down because the tree, uh, already got a professionals looking at it, it's five thousand dollars to take it down. My my first thing was gonna do, I was gonna try to uh uh, cut um, cut some of the poison ivy out down on the ground so it can stop sucking up water and maybe to kill itself out. And maybe the tree will look better.
Yeah, that is something you might want to try, but uh killing off poison ivy is a multi-year effort, so um I I had a patch of it in my own backyard and and it uh it was a constant battle for about a year and a half, and for me, the worst time of the year was May. That seemed to be when um, when the um, the the sap was the worst. But anyway, I just wanted to say, you know, be very careful with that, thank you.
Yeah, we, uh, the, we had a professional person come out, because just like I told, uh, um the people that came out that by that tree being on top of, one said the tree is hanging over lines or whatever, and that was the main reason why, another reason why I wanted to take it, because if a storm come through and that tree do come down it's gonna be people without power. So that was my, that was another concern I was looking at is taking it down, because right there where the tree is sitting at, if uh my niece and her father decide, we're gonna get the professional in there to take it out then that'd be a good, a nice spot right there for me to put some chips down and she can sit her trash cans right there in the corner instead of having her trash cans in front of her house or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
We gonna make it beautiful, we gonna ma- we gonna make it beautiful for long.
Great.
Thank you.
Um, I might also suggest that you get at least three estimates for removing the tree.
Already got three of them.
Okay, great.
And and look, the the lowest one was fifty five hundred.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Could I have a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion, let me make sure I've got the right thing here. Um, to approve H D C twenty twenty five dash zero zero thirty five part of property at thirty four Avondale Street in Laurel. This is Nancy Steinigie.
I second the motion, Gail Snyder. Thank you. Sydney, we have a motion to approve and a second, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you.
Ms. Steinigie?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Liz?
Yes.
Ms. McSiney?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you for, sir, for coming and answering our questions.
Thank you very much, thank all of y'all, and y'all have a nice day, nice night, and uh, we gonna keep law looking good.
Great, thank you.
Take care.
You too, bye bye. Okay, item six, H D C twenty twenty five dash zero zero four zero for thirty Post Office Avenue. Submitted by John Kish, the applicant is seeking approval to replace his roof. Would staff like to present their report?
Yes, uh, this is Justin Thornton again, uh, the applicant is seeking approval to replace roof. The roof has been damaged and discovered, discolored due to weather weathering over time. Uh, the proposed roof design will be changed from a three tap to a architectural style. Uh, and the color of the roof will be brought back to the original color of black. Uh, uh, there's pictures of before and after in the staff report, and I believe the applicant is here uh, to answer any of the following questions, and staff recommends uh approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Uh, any questions?
Madam Chairman, this is Gail Snyder, I move that we approve H D C twenty twenty five dash zero zero four zero for approval.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Sydney, we have a motion from Ms. Snyder and a second from Ms. Frazier, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Liz?
Yes.
Ms. Steinigie?
Yes.
Ms. McSiney?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You, and thank you Mister Kish for coming to our meeting, we appreciate it. Good night. Item number seven. H D C twenty twenty five dash zero zero four four for three forty four Main Street. Submitted by Matt Mangan, the applicant is seeking approval to repaint the building from white to graceful gray. Would staff like to sub- share their report?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Board members, this is Taylor Harvey again with E C D. The applicant is seeking approval to repaint the exterior of the property. The applicant is seeking H C C um, approval to repaint the existing brick of the property. The existing brick is in white color and the applicant proposes to repaint the existing brick in graceful gray. Staff recommends H C C approved certificate number H D C C twenty twenty five zero zero four four, thank you, Madam Chair, the applicant is online for any question.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Uh, I would like to know what they're gonna do with the shutters, are they gonna remain the same in the same color?
The applicant can
Yes, ma'am, they'll remain black.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve twenty twenty five dash zero zero four four to change the uh color of the building from white to graceful gray.
Thank you.
This is Nancy Steinigie, I would like to second the motion.
Thank you. Sydney, we have a motion from Ms. Snyder and a second from Ms. Steinigie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Steinigie?
Yes.
Ms. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Liz?
Yes.
Ms. McSiney?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you for coming to answer our questions.
Thank you, ma'am, have a good evening.
You too. Um, there were two staff approvals, and other than that, I think we're good to go. If someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move, will you adjourn?
Thank you, see you in December, which I can hardly believe. Oh, I do have a question, Sydney, do we have a schedule for next year yet?
We do, we are getting it finalized by the CLIPs office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have the date of the meeting in December?
I believe, I don't want to steer you wrong, yes, we do, I will email it to you guys right now, we only have one staff approval and the deadline is next Tuesday, so, Chris, fingers crossed, there won't be a meeting.
Um, it should be the seventeenth, is what's on my calendar.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Oscar, I want to apologize to the Commission for me showing up late today.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
That's, that's okay, I I was just here in the background listening, but I just wanted to apologize to the Commission because um I had to go to Rocky George and put one of my, one of our cats down this afternoon. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that I showing up late, we we knew that this was gonna happen, but we didn't, we we didn't know that it was gonna happen so fast.
You never know, oh, I am so sorry, you have my sympathies.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry again, and I'll see you in December.
Don't worry about it. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody, happy Thanksgiving.